Okay, roll.
Yes, let me, uh, let Ross connect and then we should be good to go.
Okay, Ross, let me know when you're, you're good to go. Good to go.
Okay, uh, we can, let me just double check. Chris, are you good to go? We can do the text. Yep, we can go.
All right, and thanks to Victoria, and I will be officially calling this meeting to order the right way as opposed to using my hand on the table. Calling to order the Monday, May 4th, 2020, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
First order of business on our agenda this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Uh, at this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Reverend Tal Sullivan.
Let's start with a moment of silence. Almighty God, we come before you at the start of this meeting recognizing your greatness and, uh, Lord, recognizing our need for you in a time where there's so much, God, so much attention on something that's microscopic and yet, uh, has, has the need for us to be thinking about and changing a lot of things and the way that we conduct our daily lives right now. And yet, God, you are deserving of as much, if not much more, attention than this virus. And so we come to you at the start of this meeting and we ask, oh, God, for your blessing for our city, God, for our city's leaders. I pray, God, for our mayor and for our city council and for all of our city servants, that you would minister life and strength and wisdom to them. God, we pray for those in our state leadership, God, all the way up to our governor. We pray, God, for wisdom for her and for all of those who give counsel to her. And, God, in our nation, we pray for the leaders at a national level. We pray for wisdom and strength for them, and we pray, God, for our president as he gives leadership. God, we say the pledge of allegiance that we are one nation under God, and I do pray that you would help us to be unified as a nation. God, we can argue and fight and point fingers, or we can work together and be unified and let you be the one who's ultimately in charge. And so we ask, God, that you would do great things in these days. Give, give us wisdom, give us, Lord, health. I pray for health in the families that are represented here right now, uh, God, that there would be more than just health from a virus, but, God, health in people's emotions and health spiritually and physically. God, we thank you for this day. Thank you that we could be alive. And I pray that you would bless this time as the leaders of our city make decisions. Give them wisdom. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Tori, can we throw the flag up?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, as we have done in the past, we have reached the first public comments section of tonight's agenda. Again, there will be two. This one is for comments that are included on tonight's agenda. Uh, you may present your thoughts on issues that are certainly going to be discussed tonight. Council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymich.net or by phone at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment at this time, please raise your hand or dial in at 1312-626-6799. Again, that number is 1312-626-6799, and you will be recognized by either name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, there is no one in the queue.
All right, so in case somebody is dialing in, we, we do have a very esteemed guest with us this evening, uh, from his palatial library, uh, county treasurer Andy Meisner is with us. Um, even though that this is typically the section reserved for items that are included on tonight's agenda, gonna take a point of privilege and allow the county treasurer to address us at the beginning instead of having him wait until the end. Andy, just as, uh, as you know, the rule is you got three minutes. Feel free to use all of them, sir.
Okay, I'll try not to use them all, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you distinguished members of the council and esteemed, uh, Berkeley municipal staff and pastor. Uh, thank you for those important words. Um, and if I may, on a point of personal privilege, extend my condolences to the Turbrack family on the loss of Lucy. Um, I know just how dogs can become a, a part of the family, and so, uh, we genuinely, uh, offer our condolences and, um, we're grateful for the new member of the Turbrack family, but I guess such is the difficult cycle of life, my brother, and, and we really are sorry.
Thank you, Stare. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, uh, I, uh, I wanted to just quickly share a few, uh, points. Um, the first is that, uh, you know, as the, the pastor described, we're experiencing a great crisis with, uh, coronavirus. And for anybody that's out there who is having any difficulty related to their property taxes, particularly their delinquent property taxes, um, I want to make sure that folks know that we have suspended the tax foreclosure for this year. Uh, if you owe delinquent taxes and you're on a payment plan, uh, encourage you to maintain those payments to the extent possible, um, but this is an extraordinary circumstance, and our office, uh, wants to make sure that your first priority is on your basic needs, staying healthy, uh, to caring for your family, for any other dependents, and we don't want to add that additional stressor to your life. Uh, so if you are in that circumstance, uh, the treasurer's office wants to work with you. Uh, we also want to offer assistance. And if I may quickly share a phone number, 248-807-5287. That's 248-807-5287. That is the phone number for our Financial Empowerment Center. And whether you are an individual who is going through a cash crunch, having a tough time accessing the unemployment system, uh, which a lot of people are having difficulty with, or trying to establish a personal budget right now when there's less money coming in, we have free counseling that is available to assist you. In addition to individual support, we're also offering support for our small businesses. Uh, Berkeley has so many tremendous small businesses, and there are resources that are available to assist them. Uh, we offer counseling to small businesses, but also help applying for a number of the grant and loan programs that are available. Uh, Oakland County has a grant program that's going, uh, that offers up to $10,000. Uh, the original money was depleted rather quickly, uh, but that fund is being replenished with another $12 million. Uh, if you need assistance applying for that, give us a call, or, uh, if you're trying to apply for some of the federal programs, in particular, the paycheck protection program, uh, we can assist you with that application process, which can pay up to two and a half months of your payroll to allow you to either call workers back or, uh, to avoid laying them off to begin with. Um, I'm probably getting close to my three minutes, so let me just, uh, quickly highlight, um, and thank, uh, Councilwoman Dean because I think that she was kind enough to mention this, uh, at the last meeting. Our frontline healthcare workers and first responders are truly going through, uh, extraordinary challenges right now. And as somebody who's had a family history of mental health, I'm particularly concerned about people's mental health and well-being. Oh, and I see that Tori, thank you, um, has posted, uh, a very valuable resource, uh, that I want to commend to everybody's attention. And if you are a frontline healthcare worker or a first responder, and you have been exposed to very traumatic things, dealing and helping people, this health line that is available is offered through the Wayne State School of Social Work. You can call it anonymously, confidentially, and you can talk to a licensed mental health professional about what you're seeing and getting some assistance so that you can stay on the job and continue your heroic work serving our community during this unprecedented crisis. Uh, it looks like the, yeah, the number is 888-910-1636. Alternatively, if you are a person experiencing mental health challenges, uh, you're having difficulty, you can call this other number that's fantastic, which is the Warm Line offered through the State Department of Health and Human Services. And this is not for an emergency situation, but you're concerned about your mental health and how you're handling either isolation of being alone or just the fact that this is scary stuff we're going through, you can call this second number, um, to get peer support, uh, which is 888-PIER-753. Uh, and both of these are very helpful resources. We're very focused on physical health because the COVID-19, uh, issue is on our mind, uh, but good mental health is always really important. And so with that, I'm very grateful, uh, to, uh, the mayor and distinguished leadership uh, in Berkeley for the steady hand that you have provided through a difficult time. And we just close in saying that the, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, we're gonna get through this.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, one for, for being here certainly this evening, um, certainly for, for the kind words, uh, to, to myself and my family at the beginning. Uh, I was willing to let you go over three minutes because the information that obviously you provided is so important, um, to, to all the residents of Oakland County and especially of the residents of Berkeley right now. So again, thank you for, for taking the time and for all the work that you continue to do, um, as, as a treasurer.
It's a pleasure. Have a wonderful meeting and thank you for this opportunity and for all of your, uh, important leadership. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tori, has anybody else called in? For?
No, there is no one in the queue.
Okay, seeing no other additional public comments for, uh, items that are included on tonight's agenda, we will move on to our order of business this evening. First off is the consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on our consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th City Council meeting on Monday, April 20th, 2020. Motion number M-2220, matter of approving the 2020 summer maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley. The city will be reimbursed a total of $1,680, which will be paid in two installments, $1,092 due in September 2020 and $588 due upon completion of last maintenance activity. Three, proclamation number P-620, matter proclaiming May 2020 as Berkeley History Month. Four, proclamation number P-720, matter proclaiming May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Five, proclamation number P-820, matter proclaiming May 2020 as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Six, proclamation number P-920, matter of designating May 20th, 2020 as Berkeley Master Plan Day.
We'll stop me using myself from now on. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
The flash, uh, support was from, uh, Councilmember Gavin. Uh, motion was made by Councilmember Price. Um, are there discussion, corrections, or additions? And just very quickly, as we are sticking to, um, the, the rules of the executive order and, and focusing on essential items, we still did want to be able to pass these proclamations, even though it's not in the traditional sense as, as how we would normally do it. So it is very important, and that's something that we decided to move to keep them on the consent agenda tonight. So I want to make sure that was clear. Okay, seeing no changes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Resolution number R-920, matter of authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing to be held on May 18th, 2020 regarding reprogramming 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Is there a motion to approve R-0920?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as the motion mentions, this is a federal program, so the Community Development Block Grant comes with a very stringent set of rules in how we use those funds, as well as the oversight from the community that goes along with it. Uh, if you recall back in November, we set out, uh, our program year and how we intend to expend funds, uh, and this has been an annual thing going back for quite a while. Uh, in this particular situation, we had previously postponed a, uh, project to remove architectural barriers at the Public Safety Department, and we moved those monies into a sidewalk program that's, uh, installed the tactile paper base at the intersections. So now we're moving, again, moving forward with this project now, so we're doing the opposites under, uh, this proposed public hearing where we'll be reprogramming sidewalk funds into the gate, the entryway project. In order to do that, we must again hold a public hearing, and we're asking the council's permission to set that public hearing for May 18th, which will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, you're joined by both the Finance Director, as well as the Community Development Director, who work together on setting these projects year to year.
Thank you. Are there questions for, uh, City Manager, Finance Director? Seeing none, this is obviously for the public hearing that will be held, if this passes, on May 18th. Seeing nobody raising their hand or making any noise, did a very, uh, excellent job of explaining that, Mr. City Manager. There are no questions for you. Seeing nobody ready to hop in here, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-0920?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now, we'll find item number two, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Ordinance number O-820, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, repealing Section 138-603 of Article 6, Division 4 of Chapter 138 zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-0820?
So moved. Support.
A motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll look to the agenda, you'll notice this kicks off what we call the Schluto Show this evening. Uh, it's a set of four ordinance updates that came out of Community Development. Uh, this first one comes to you by way of the Planning Commission, which held a public hearing and recommended approval of the removal of an administrative, uh, allowance to granted dimensional variances.
Aaron?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, yes, um, as I familiarized myself with the ordinance, uh, when I first started, uh, I noticed that there, um, in Section 138-603, there, uh, allows a administrative review and approval of dimensional variances under very specific conditions, uh, by the building official and the city planner, uh, wherein they would act as the ZVA to determine whether or not a project fit this criteria. Um, I have provided that ordinance to you in its entirety, just so you could, uh, see it, um, in its entirety. Um, so the three conditions that must be met are the use of the building or land is conforming, number two, no more than two variances have been granted to the property within the last five years, and number three, the request does not exceed existing building setbacks. Um, where it, while this may seem like a, um, a beneficial way of, of moving through some of these, uh, smaller projects, this is not a normal allowance for the city planner or building official to act as the zoning board of appeals. Uh, I have consulted with a number of other city planners, uh, community development directors, city attorneys, um, in local municipalities and also in the private sector, and nobody has this built into their ordinances. I've looked at several, several ordinances throughout, uh, throughout Michigan, and this is not a common occurrence. Um, so therefore, um, in order to eliminate any kind of ambiguity or any kind of, um, push from the public to have these things done on an administrative level, I am, had requests or, uh, had recommended to Planning Commission that they hold a public hearing to repeal this section in its entirety. The Planning Commission held their public hearing at the April 28th meeting, and they recommended unanimously to repeal the section of the ordinance, wherein it's recommended to you as the City Council to, um, prove or not. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Erin. Are there questions for our Community Development Director? I mean, we are doing very well with explanations this evening. I, uh, I certainly, uh, appreciate that very in-depth, and, and this is something that, obviously, Erin, you mentioned, uh, was already discussed, Planning Commission certainly unanimously approved, um, and, and we, you know, at least I agree that, that it makes sense, and judging by the fact that there's not a whole lot of questions, I would, I would think that, uh, we'll find out that council also feels that way in, in just a moment. Seeing nobody's, uh, hmm, looking to make a comment, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-0820?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on the Schluto Show? I'm sorry, on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O-920, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to repeal and replace Article 2 of Chapter 50 Fire Prevention Code of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to adopt the 2015 International Fire Code and to prescribe penalties for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-920?
So moved.
To approve.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Should we go right to Ms. Schluto, or do you want to comment first, Mr. Baumgartner?
Uh, by all means, Mr. Mayor.
Erin, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, yeah, this is with, um, this ordinance was reviewed and in-depth with, um, McKenna Associates, with our Public Safety, uh, Matt Kane and Chief Matt Kane and, uh, Corey Miller and, um, a couple of other, uh, Public Safety Officers who guided us and gave us their expertise, as well as was reviewed by John Staran. So we're looking to adopt the 2015 International Fire Code. Um, a lot of our ordinances had previously, um, noted the 2012, um, and Boca, um, uh, the 1996 edition of the National Fire Prevention Code. This has been not in use and has been, hasn't been, um, in, in use. It's, it's outdated. I mean, it's been outdated for, for almost 20 years at this point. So, um, we're looking to update it with the most recent, uh, adopted version by the state. Uh, the state has adopted the 2015 edition. Um, we are looking to adopt that same 2015 edition, uh, in order to be consistent with what the state has adopted. Uh, they do update their fire code every three years, so there is a 2018 version out there. Um, however, the state did not adopt the 2018 version. Um, it is anticipated that they will adopt the 2021 edition, um, so we will be coming back to, uh, to adopt that in order to be consistent with the state, but we really wanted to make sure that we were, um, up to date, um, at least in this century, uh, with the, uh, fire codes that we are currently using, which is the 2015 edition. Happy to answer any questions.
Jack, how do we feel about this?
Uh, I think this is a good idea. Uh, fire, fire codes are very confusing, and so we might as well get the most current ones. We can get the best idea of what's going on. I've talked to Pete Kelly about this, and he's all in favor of it, and I think it's, uh, it's good to be aligned with the state.
Excellent. Additional questions on this, uh, for, uh, Ms. Schluto? Okay, well, no reason to stop a moving train. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-0920?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yeah.
Ordinance O-0920 has been approved. We now move on to item number four, please.
Ordinance number O-1020, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Section 30-186 of Article 5, Division 1 of Chapter 30 Businesses, to update the citation to the Property Maintenance Code and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-1020?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Schluto?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so this, uh, ordinance, uh, O-1020 is, um, really just our, uh, maintenance or due diligence of going through the entire ordinance to making sure that we are, um, updating with the most, uh, up-to-date versions of our ordinances. Um, so you'll see, um, as part of your packet, uh, the ordinance, uh, that shows the strike through of the definitions, um, in which case Boca was once again, uh, referenced, where we have replaced that with the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. Um, this is another code that's going to be adopted a little later on this evening, and it was just, uh, imperative that we remove any references of Boca in the ordinance before you receive it.
Seemed a little presumptuous there that we're gonna be passing another one this evening, but we'll see what happens. As, as we're looking at here, we're looking at the citation. It is a line, uh, are there additional questions or clarification for our director? Councilmember Blanchard?
I just had a question. The, the, the way the strike-through area was written, it looks like they had a couple extra words in there that should have been taken out, so I hope that that's gonna be correct when they get done. It looks like Property Maintenance Code is in there twice.
Okay, we'll make sure we get that addressed, uh, before the next one, but it was, uh, for Boca.
Right, I understand what we're supposed to do, but it looked like when they hit, did the strikeout, that something didn't come up right, at least on the copy I've got. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on oh ten twenty?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number five on tonight's agenda, please.
Ordinance number oh eleven twenty, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section eighteen dash six three of Chapter Eighteen Amusements and Entertainments, to update the citation to the city's adopted building codes and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve oh eleven twenty?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. As we look at another correction, Ms. Schluto?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this one is brought before you to amend um section eighteen dash sixty-three, um, which is related to compliance with zoning and building codes for the arts and entertainment or amusements and entertainment, excuse me, and um, this was just another uh removal of the references to Boca, uh, to replace it with the Michigan Building Code and add the uh Mechanical Trade Code into the list of um uh general building regulations and code book, building code books that need to be referenced uh in this section.
So again, this is a, a clean-up and a removal and and addition.
Correct.
Relatively straightforward, but questions for our director? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Chris, you're here. I want to make sure you're, you get a little, you get a minute just in case. Everything sound good to you? Sorry, made you turn the mute button off.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, uh, these proposed ordinance amendments have been reviewed by my partner, Mr. Sterren, and are approved as the form. They are really housekeeping like issues to uh bring the ordinances up to date and consistent with what has been adopted at a state level.
Thank you. You were here tonight, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to say something.
Appreciate that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on oh eleven twenty?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Uh, we now move on to item number six on our agenda, please.
Ordinance number oh twelve twenty, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, amending Chapter Twenty-Six Building and Building Regulations of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to adopt the State Construction Code as updated and amended, to adopt the twenty fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as the city's property maintenance code, to adopt the Michigan Rehabilitation Code as the city's rehabilitation code for existing buildings, and to provide penalties for violations.
Is there a motion to approve oh twelve twenty?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Blanchard. All right, this ordinance has a little bit more involved than some of the, the last ones that we looked at. Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to take a stab at this one first?
I'd love to, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let's see, when we look at, uh, there are a couple of things that the city enforces on a regular basis, and uh, you'll see they're all listed out here one by one. And so we sort of adopt each of these uh various state codes en masse in a single uh ordinance, and you'll see, as we move through here, that that's exactly what this does. It makes the appropriate adoptions to bring us in compliance with what the states uh, what the state provides for municipalities, will adopt it and follow suits, and as well as start to clarify how exactly that we will enforce some of these items, uh, again, be uh moving us more consistent with the state. And so you'll see there are a number of different areas that, and provided in the text of the ordinance in your packet, there's a lot of red in this particular item, but uh, the general theme here is that we're moving us more in line with the state codes.
Are there questions for city manager? Again, we are making sure that we are up to date and have all the correct references and using the correct codes and to make sure that our ordinances are aligned. Seeing no additional questions or comments, I have no alternative but to call the roll on oh twelve twenty.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We have now moved uh to public comments, our second uh public comments. Again, this
is intended for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. Same rules apply as before. If you need to uh reach a Department of the City, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkeleymich.net, or call the clerk's office at two four eight six five eight three three one zero. If you would like to comment uh by phone, please call one three one two six two six six seven nine nine. Again, that is one three one two six two six six seven nine nine. You will be recognized by either name or number. And when you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
At the moment, Mr. Mayor, there is no one in the queue.
All right, we'll give them another minute, just in case they have misdialed and had to redial again. Still nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. We will close the second public comments portion of our evening, and we will move on to communications. And this time, Ms. Mitchell, I will let you tell me who goes first.
Uh, Councilmember Gavin.
Councilmember Gavin. I have to remember where you are in order of our seating, but you may, you may begin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a couple uh quick updates. Uh, Master Plan Steering Committee uh met to discuss a survey uh that was uh created, excuse me, to get resident feedback on the most important issues uh regarding the master plan itself. Uh, it was decided that we, you know, we didn't want to delay the process itself, uh, so the survey would be put out on social media, uh, and a postcard sent out to residents, uh, directing them where to go online uh for uh completing that survey itself. And also, if you can't um access it online, you will also be able to uh get a hard copy mailed to you as well. So, uh, you know, thank you to Carlisle Warman, thank you to Erin, thank you to Matt, uh, everyone that took the time to help actually craft this early step uh in the opinion and data gathering process, uh, which certainly will take many forms itself. So, uh, that was Master Plan, uh, Steering Committee. The Planning Commission uh indicate, as I indicated, uh, they gave feedback on the survey itself, uh, along with councils uh as well, uh, reviewed and recommended approval of the uh capital improvement plan, and also held a public hearing to change uh certainly the zoning ordinance that we, that we saw tonight, uh, for revoking the authority of the building official or uh uh city planner for granting dimensional variances uh during administrative review. So, those are the things I wanted to cover tonight. Uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and uh, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, the zoning board of appeals will meet online one week from tonight on Monday, May eleventh at seven PM. They'll hear two cases. One is to replace the sign at the American Legion, and another is for a resident proposing a driveway expansion that is larger than is normally allowed. And I just wanted to give a, a brief comment on COVID nineteen. Uh, despite the good news we're starting to see and the decrease in cases and deaths in the region, I want to remind people, we're not out of the woods yet. Um, as an example, there was a major update that was released today to the one of the models that's used by the White House, and it shows a significant increase in the number of predicted deaths. And one of the reasons for this is indications that people are getting lax in social distancing. So I just ask, let's not undo the progress we've made so far. Stay home, save lives.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, in terms of the Parks and Recreation Department, please continue to visit their Facebook page. Um, there are engagement opportunities there, and you'll be updated on the latest um updates um for Parks and Recreation. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation and Library staff, along with Matt Church and Theresa McCarleton, as well as Councilmember Gavin, for continuing to do the wellness checks. Um, if you would like to get a call and you're not on the list, please call me, Bridgette Dean, at two four eight nine three zero zero five four four, or Theresa McCarleton at two four eight six seven two zero two nine five, and we'll, we'll be happy to add you to the list. Um, the sweetest responses really that we're getting are from those who are living alone and have no one to keep them company. So this, these calls truly do matter. Um, and just to share um kind of rather comical yet heartwarming um tidbit from Matt Church, I think he gets, he gets the award for the most entertaining callback from a resident who, on a return call, left a message indicating that she was really craving a pizza from a certain Berkeley pizza establishment, and she gave Matt Church her order just in case he was able to deliver it to her. Uh, when Matt called her back, he encouraged her to continue to try to get an order delivered from Jets. So we're, we're getting all kinds of feedback. Um, it's all pretty positive, and I'm grateful and um honored to have the opportunity to make these calls, um, to make sure that not only our, our residents well, that they're being looked in upon and, and we can be reassured that they're doing okay. And if they're not, we can connect them with any available services. So, this too shall pass, and remember, we are Berkeley Strong. Have a good week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Well, yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates. Uh, first, the um Historical Committee uh wants to um give a happy birthday shout-out to um ourselves. Happy birthday, Berkeley. Uh, coming up here on May twenty-third is our city's anniversary. We became a city on May twenty-third, nineteen thirty-two. Um, if you remember the, the twenty-three and the thirty-two, you just flip the numbers, and there you go. So, a happy birthday, Berkeley. And the Historical Committee recently had partnered with the uh Technology Advisory Committee to uh to look at the types of equipment uh that they can use to scan additional types of historic documents and artifacts, uh, some of which are unconventional in size and shape and are a little bit difficult to fit onto a, a standard scanner. Uh, they've recently purchased, acquired, and set up, and uh, and just started to use before this whole um craziness started, uh, with an overhead scanner. It basically looks like a lamp that goes up over the table and beams down. And so this gives the um, the users an opportunity to um, to rapidly scan artifacts of various sizes that otherwise would be very difficult to, to get a high-resolution capture of. So, uh, that's an example of one of the many ways in which our, our fantastic committees and volunteers uh find great ways to work together and help address uh common challenges and opportunities to, to do great things on behalf of the city. Um, uh, from a downtown development authority, DDA perspective, the board meets again uh next week's Wednesday, May thirteenth. Uh, and that happens to be, I'm sure others will mention this as well, that happens to be the second of two days of our budget hearings. Again, just because of the sequence of the um, the conversation here, I'm the, I'm the, the, the one who gets to offer up this uh big binder full of all sorts of pages. Uh, we will be reviewing this in very thorough detail um on uh Tuesday, May twelfth, and Wednesday, May thirteenth, and we look forward to uh, to uh reviewing and making sure that this budget represents our values and our priorities uh for the community in the upcoming year. The DDA is also partnering with the chamber, and I'll, I'll um defer to my colleague, Mr. Blanchard, on uh the specifics, uh, but there's a series of social media uh messages that will be coming out on a daily basis, uh, promoting different aspects of our, of our community and all of the great things that our businesses and restaurants and shops uh have to offer, uh, to one and all. And finally, it's um, it's been a little while since I've quoted Albert Einstein, so I thought I'd get back into the groove. Uh, creativity is intelligence having fun. Creativity is intelligence having fun. Uh, it's been great walking around the neighborhoods and seeing folks being as creative as they possibly can here, uh, given the circumstances and context that we find ourselves in. Uh, folks, um, you know, hanging Easter eggs from the tree branches and, and doing terrific chalk art on the sidewalk, um, posting uh handmade posters and drawings uh in their front windows, and um, uh, doing all sorts of great things um out and about, uh, having conversations from their front porch to folks passing by, uh, while maintaining safe uh social distancing. It's been absolutely fantastic. Uh, so, um, I too would like to encourage everybody to continue to do what's right, continue to stay safe, continue to take care of yourselves and your families, and those of us around us here, because we are really in this together. And I'll close by repeating the same expression from the last couple of meetings, uh, to remember that we are not stuck at home, we are safe at home. With that, thank you, Your Honor.
There we go, wasn't letting me unmute, there we go. Okay, perfect. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to Ms. Schluto, Mr. Baumgarten, to all of our city staff, um, for continuing to provide our essential services, keeping our, our codes updated. I also want to thank our library director, Matt Church, for supporting residents in so many ways. In addition to those personal phone calls, he's recently been able to add yet another um digital, a collection of digital resources to the library's collection. And I just want to remind residents that if you don't have a, a library card, or if you think yours has expired, contact our library director uh directly. He will go ahead and issue a new library card over the phone digitally, no contact, and you'll have access to many of our digital collections, including this new one, which has fantastic graphic novels for the kids. So thank you to our library. I also want to thank all of our city leadership and staff, um, who continue to deliver these essential services while beginning to imagine what the gradual return to a new normal may look like. I know that we're all eager to get out and interact with each other. Nevertheless, we must carefully follow the recommendations of the experts and remain cautiously optimistic during this process. This weekend, I deep cleaned my front porch, and I set up play spaces for the kids out there. And as much as I love sitting out there and chatting with neighbors from a safe distance as they're walking by, I am concerned by how few are wearing the recommended face coverings or wearing them and then walking um within six feet of each other. I see kids from different households riding bikes near each other and throwing balls back and forth across lawns in the nearby parking lot. And I spoke with a neighbor who, despite having serious underlying health issues, is now planning to snuggle up with the five-year-old granddaughter that she hasn't seen in person in eight weeks. I understand that prolonged social distancing is hard. It's so hard. And in many ways, this nice weather makes it seem even harder. But the experts tell us that stopping social distancing too, too soon will lead to more COVID cases and deaths. So let's find ways to enjoy the outdoors and connect with friends and family and neighbors safely. Experts at the national, state, and county levels will help us return to a new normal, but they need our help, too. All of us need to do what we can to protect ourselves, our loved ones, and our neighbors by following the current recommendations. We are all in this together, and the only way that we can get out of it is by following the expert guidelines and recommendations together. Stay home, stay safe, save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, if you remember the last meeting, I told everybody that the Art Bash was canceled and the chamber was was going to try and move some of those artists into the Street Art Fest area, and we're going to enlarge that a little bit. Well, the bad news is, the Chamber has now decided they're going to have to cancel the Street Art Fest, so we're not going to be an art city this summer. So, that's the bad news. I'd like to say that the numbers of cases, the number of deaths in the city is holding pretty steady, not going up, which is a great sign. We have had six deaths in the city, and hopefully that will be the end for us. But as Councilmember Price just said, if we're not careful, we may see that changing. As Councilmember Baker mentioned, the Chamber is working great with the DDA, and they are having themed days of the week. And I can't remember what they all are, and I forgot to write them down, but if you go to the Chamber website or the DDA websites, you can see that they have themes for each day, and the intent there is to support the local businesses. When we get through this, we want to have some local businesses left. So, please, if you need to spend some money, spend your money in the local businesses. Let's keep them going so that when this is over with, we'll look pretty much the same as we do now, and which is what we really like. I also like to put a shout out to public safety. They have been doing a fantastic job of keeping everybody in their organization safe while still getting the job done in the city. And that's thanks to a lot of great training and PPE and all the things that they're supposed to be doing, and they are doing it very well. I guess lastly, I just want to say, everybody stay safe, as we want to be able to see you all in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really encouraged to hear all the good stories and the accolades for the city staff here. The timing couldn't be more perfect, May 3rd through May 9th is Public Service Recognition Week. That is a national effort to recognize the, all the fantastic accomplishments of public servants from sea to shining sea. So, really happy to hear those stories being shared here locally in Berkeley. But we're not just a city of fantastic public servants, we're a city of fantastic residents, period. And we're working on gathering a lot of those stories so we can feature our residents and the fantastic work they're doing right now. If you know, or if you know, or your neighbor knows, or if you've come across a story of a resident, a Berkeley resident, doing fantastic things for the community, send that story to Tori Mathis at communications@berkeleymish.net. We would love to start featuring those residents and telling their stories so that, you know, it says Berkeley Strong on the marquee, it's not just a slogan, we really are a fantastic community. So, again, that's communications@berkeleymish.net. We're collecting those stories right now. Want to move on to another fantastic thing that Berkeley is doing as well, the census. You know, the census is going on despite all that's, the rest of what's happening in the world. Berkeley is doing just an absolutely fantastic job. We are fifth in the state right now and just a half a percentage behind the third place and fourth place communities of Beverly Hills and East Grand Rapids, so we can take those guys easy. But nationally, we are 62nd out of 19,000 communities. So, we are doing just a phenomenal job. Keep it up, Berkeley, you're doing a great. You're taking the census, you're encouraging your neighbors to participate in the census, and we could break the top 50 pretty easily from where we are right now, so happy about that. Last but not least, since this is May the 4th, I'll leave you with the wise parting words of "Let the Wookiee Win." Just thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I don't have any idea what that means, but I do appreciate the census shout out. As you know, I'm a little bit competitive on where we are in the census, so I'm very happy to hear that we're doing so well. So, thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one item. As council knows, the Governor's Executive Order 48 expires next week, May 12th, at the end of May 12th. It's likely, I believe, that the governor will extend that executive order and will keep council apprised of when any new executive order on that issue is passed. And just wanted to make sure that council's aware of that. Nothing further.
And thank you for being with us this evening, Mr. Chris. Before I move on, I do see that Councilmember Gavin keeps raising his hand like he forgot something down in my bottom corner. So, Councilmember Gavin, was there something you missed?
I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Your Honor. Just to piggyback on the city manager's comments there, I would like to say that with regard to the census, there is a competition going on between a bunch of local communities, and I will say that Berkeley has been the envy of everybody with regards to the census. Everybody keeps saying, "How is Berkeley doing so well?" And so it's pretty exciting that Berkeley is doing the amazing job that it is with regards to the census. And just so you know, it is an envy of all the local communities, so that's all I had to say. So, just to piggyback on that, thank you.
Well, thank you. And as I mentioned, it is something I'm pretty competitive on, so we are not giving away any of our secrets to those other municipalities. They can just remain envious of us. We do have a few other folks. Victoria, we do not have an election, so anything you want to throw in here for communications?
Just reiterate that, yes, we have had some residents reach out. The May 5th election obviously would be tomorrow, but the city of Berkeley does not have a May 5th election, so I want to reiterate that. And people looking for the absentee ballot application for the August 4th election, and that will be a joint application for August and November, those will be available very soon. We have had people sending in applications to receive an absentee ballot for May 5th. We've reached out to everyone who sent that in and let them know that we do not have a May 5th election, but we will have the correct application soon. And on that regard, just another plug, of course, the state of Michigan is a no reason absentee ballot state now, so every voter is eligible to vote in the August and November election via an absentee ballot. So, that's a very important point. Alls you need to do is you can call us and ask for an application. You can find them online, either through the Secretary of State or through our local website as soon as we have that application, and let us know that you want one, and we'll send one out. You sign it, send it back, and you'll receive your ballot in the mail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have just a couple of things. Most of them have already been mentioned, so I will be reinforcing at this point. Councilmember Blanchard mentioned many of the wonderful things our PSO officers are doing and have continued to do and will continue to do to keep us safe. But there are drive-bys, special drive-bys for birthdays. I know it would have been an incredible surprise for many kids in the neighborhood. I had a few drive-by my house the other day, fire truck and squad cars in tow, lights on, and it was pretty exciting. Trying to take a, certainly a situation that we're not used to doing, and being able to add something special has been tremendous, so I want to thank them for that as well. As most of you know, the governor signed an executive order on May 1st allowing construction activities to resume on the 7th, May 7th, which is Thursday, in addition to landscaping. And our code enforcement will also be back online on the 7th in a limited capacity. Like was mentioned by my council member, by my colleagues, I should say before this, it doesn't mean that everything is over and you could, just because you see somebody working, they're supposed to be maintaining social distance and the proper PPE as well, does not mean that we can just revert back to business as usual. But we are trying to allow slowly some businesses, again, if they can abide by social distancing, to be able to resume some work. Also, as was mentioned, the budget hearings are next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then these are the most important conversations that we have on an annual basis, minding the money of the residents, especially with the uncertainty that we are currently facing. Additionally, I am instituting a "you can wear your hat if you want" and casual attire for these meetings. It's getting a little more difficult personally, I know, to try to maintain this main up here, and these are, here we go, we have captains down here. Okay, you're already ready. That was not even a plant. And casual, again, these obviously are very important. We go line by line through the budget book that Councilmember Baker held up just a few moments ago. It's critically important. We certainly hope that we have residents involved. Thank you again, Steve, for holding that up. But that is happening next week. And finally, last month, I introduced you to the newest member of our family, and as we heard earlier, we said goodbye today to one of the oldest members of our family. So, rest in peace, Lucy, and I hope, I'm sure there are plenty of mail carriers wherever you are now to continue to alert us. She was certainly the best mail carrier alert system ever devised, and we will miss you. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean and supported, I believe, from Councilmember Baker. Everybody shuffled on me there, somebody left. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Henon.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. The May 4th, 2020 meeting of the 38th Council is adjourned.